What's your place? Whoops. I put the minutes to comply in the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm almost there.
Okay.
One more second. Do you want to go to a different? What, with the county?
There's no, there's no hurry.
Whilst Suzanne's entering, I will let the public know that we, the school has canceled their budget meeting for tonight. So the school board meeting for Wednesday, April 3rd, has been canceled.
Okay.
I thought you, maybe 20 seconds.
We're leaving the weather report.
Yeah. CMP sent me an email and they said that they are preparing. Yes, I'm excited for that. So as I go through, we can chat about this, I see Chance and Derek. Have we started the selection of our consideration for new town attorneys?
Not yet. When I checked in with Sally, she recommended that rather than just arbitrarily choosing our own attorney or several attorneys, that we consider putting out an RFP for legal services, which I think would be reasonable to talk about in our next meeting.
Suzanne, I apologize, I just got the warrant. Before I can vote on it, I have to see it.
Lot of bills today. Treasures catching up.
All from tomorrow's Trump on vacation. I wish I had my own one now.
Yeah, at least for tomorrow.
I have one John well that is bravely looming in the midst of last year's lawn entritis.
So is this a PDQ for the door over at the firehouse? Is that what that's for?
I don't do the bills, so it doesn't say.
Counter shutters under header between manual.
That's the, oh, must be.
I'm presuming it's the window in the firehouse, but it doesn't say. Do you know about what that was for?
Let me see the account number.
It says, "Cover shutters."
Yeah, both accounted for.
Under header between jam smoke, manual operation.
Good, good to see that happening. And that comes out of, well, out of ARPA, correct?
The counter doors did come out of work, ARPA, yes.
You can talk quietly, Mr. Sullivan.
I'm almost there!
David, was it your gym who picked up the makeshift wood cradle by the front door?
It would be accepted warrant as presented.
Second on paper. Next select board meeting will be Thursday, April 11th, at 5:30 here at the Town Hall. Business item number one, town administrators' report.
Just to note that tomorrow's budget committee meeting has been rescheduled to Monday, which is the 8th, correct?
Yep.
And that will start at 6:30 PM. There will be review of the school budget, review of the fire department budget, and then the second draft of our budget.
Were you able to meet with the room commissioner?
Yes, yes, we have all the numbers and I'll be sending things out in advance so that the budget committee has time to review. And abatement review has been scheduled for Wednesday, April 17th. Jessica Westfaver will be here to sit with the board during review. What time would you like to begin?
How many will you be doing?
We have 45, it's unlikely that you're going to get through all of them.
How many were ready for today?
There were several that were ready for today, however Parker appraisal wasn't available.
Right.
And it was, the board was pretty clear that they wanted Parker appraisal.
Oh yeah, no, I just said that we had scheduled for today.
We scheduled, you know, we have to consider their schedule as well. And they were not available.
Is it reasonable to, to give an arbitrary number of like handle 20 in a day or? Because if we scheduled all 45 people, we can't get through.
Right, and there's no way to really be able to tell people how long we're going to take for each.
Right, because some of them may be simple and some are.
Right, but we will, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put together an agenda and it's going to go in back and lot order. Because that's the way Jess likes to go through it.
Yeah.
And it makes sense, because if somebody submitted two applications, it's generally together.
I think we should try and do as many as we can so that we're not doing three days out of, for me, out of office.
That's why I'm wondering, what time would you like to start? And do you want a specific end time, or do you want to go as long as you can?
I hope as long as you can, to get through as many as possible.
I'll have to change an appointment, but I think I can do that.
8:30?
I prefer 9:00. 9:00 to 4:00 with a brief break at noon and personal needs halfway through at noon and then 2-ish for just a stretch and fresh air break.
How about 9:00 to like 5:30, we can accommodate some people that don't want to take work off. I mean, I don't know how, you know, because we usually have our needs at the end of the day, if it's.
Yeah, I understand wanting to accommodate everybody's needs, but it's going to be pretty hard to schedule a lot of that.
Yeah, I won't, I won't be able to sit that long.
You could have an early session and a late session and a big break in the middle.
Yeah. Also, I mean, go to like 9:00 to 1:00 and then 2:00 to 6:00, and you've got two four-hour sessions.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm here regardless of how long you want to go.
I mean, the problem is, some people might be scheduled in the morning when they want to be in the evening. You're going to have to like contact people and figure out when do you prefer to cut, if you do that.
Yeah, that's going to be really hard to make happen.
Any thoughts for you guys if you're, if you were coming for one? Just to get a pulse of the people and what would be best for them?
I, I'd rather like the idea of doing one day with earlier appointments and the other one toward the end of the day so that people need to take time off from work.
And the board might also find that after you travel a full day with Jess, with a lot of explanation about different scenarios, that you might be comfortable doing the rest on your own, which can happen.
Is Jess available for evening appointments?
What's that?
Is Jess available for evening?
I didn't ask them that, I think if we pushed, they probably would be, but it's not part of their normal schedule.
Well, perhaps.
Why don't we schedule 9:00 to 4:00 and then see what their schedule is and then amend that, at least get a full day in, and then if we need to.
Well, Bob was clear that we have Jess all day, so she can go until 4:00.
For sure, alright. And if she can extend to 6:00, then do we do a bigger break in the middle to accommodate?
That's just not going to work for me. 9:00 to 4:00 with 20 or so minute breaks would probably be best for me.
Okay.
And other people's bodies as well, you need to.
Right. Would it be okay if I brought food in for lunch?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm going to use the contingency fund for that.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, how many do we want to try, I mean, do we say we're going to go as fast and long and just have them all there? And hopefully we can address them, I don't know how we can get, I mean, if some are only five minutes, you can in theory do several.
Right.
And I don't know.
And I think some of them maybe. But I'm guessing maybe an average of 15 minutes per application. Some of them might be a little trickier, some will be easier, and then people can sort of guesstimate when they might want to arrive.
And certainly we have the ability to, if they, to take something out of order if they weren't there and somebody else was for the schedule that day, to try and accommodate our residents as best we can.
You probably won't know exactly until you get right into it, but we can be flexible.
Well, I try and schedule at least the first 30 then, and that, and we can do our best to get through all those.
Do let folks know that it's in map number order and give a list of the people so at least they can guess when their time slots.
I'll definitely do that, I'm going to list all of them.
And say it's in this order and it's going to go.
So even if the letters are curious, they'll know the map and lot, and they can chill up if they want to.
You going to do that at the fire station?
No, we're going to do it right here, because all.
The records.
Yeah, in case we need to run and get the tree growth book or something, and the whatever we might need, property card.
Mostly, all, all 45 applicants won't be here probably at the same time. If, if we're going by map and lot, people would have a chance to guess.
I mean, certainly not here at the end of the day, or at the end of the stack, you're not going to go in the morning.
So 9:00 to 4:00 with appropriate breaks. Food from contingency. Food from contingency and at the risk of seeming wasteful enough for whoever might also be in the room, because it's rude to eat from the room.
Yeah.
And besides, if somebody's been here since 9 o'clock waiting for their turn.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, we, we just, we need an end to coffee. Maybe a coffee pot. Do you have a big one?
What's that?
We have a, do you have a big coffee pot, or I can bring my.
Um, we have a, we have a Keurig.
What about the firehouse? They probably have one.
There's this installed on the wall, so.
Yeah.
No, I think the Keurig will probably do the trick.
Lots of coffee, I'll bring a cream.
One more question.
Yeah.
Do you think that you need copies of the entire application with supporting documents and the response from Parker appraisal?
Yes.
Or is it possible that you could share? I just want you to know it's going to be thousands of copies. We can certainly print them out if you want us to, but.
Forty, 45 of.
There are concerns about how much it costs to make that many copies and the resource.
$20 a ream and how many people others.
What's the cost of the copier itself also?
It's more expensive.
Yeah, than the paper. Well, and I also, because I know that came up as a budget item for the cost of.
Right.
When I looked at the comp plan, some of the two-sided pages were copied as a page. And, and so that is clicking a meter for blank data. Only because I worked at Xerox do I, can I say that? But when we, when we're making copies, we should only print one side on one side and not duplex blank pages. Because that streak across the back is because that blank page is, and there's no other data on there, and that was a copied page when it should have been a single page. And what I just, when we look at, we doubled our color copier, and it's, that's the stuff that contributes to that unnecessarily.
I just need to know if you want copies of our.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the point is we do it in black and white, or on this machine down here that doesn't cost us anything. It's cost effective then to do it. I would like a copy, I guess is my final comment to that.
Maybe for just the tax map. Can we get larger ones, or can we have the tax map so that we can see it and not reproduce the whole map?
I don't need the map.
Oh yeah, I'm not worried about the map, that's, we can bring the maps down.
I just think it's important that we all have, we.
It's just when people, several people submitted appraisals, which are many, many pages, not necessarily pertinent. So a lot of copies. I didn't know if you needed to see them again.
What?
I think we, we need to have all the information at our fingertips, we've asked the public to wait long enough. We need to do a full review, make information, and give the best answer that we can following that. We've also cut down the time necessary versus a sharing documents if we're on a time crunch.
Will we, will we be able to see them beforehand?
You could, I mean, they're all scanned and I can send them to you.
That would be helpful. I, I would prefer to be able to see the information beforehand so that I knew, I can make my own notes.
Yeah, I mean, if that works for you, we can do that.
Yeah, and electronic copy would be sufficient for me, I'd like a hard copy. And maybe you can check with Kathy and see which would be better for her.
And if we, you know, I can pick the hard copy up in advance as well, that'd be great, because I can review it and, and try and really see what has been presented. Do we have the rest of the, before we would end this, have they given us, you know, the variations of waterfrontage and things that have been, for, to be added to the manual that we don't have right now?
We don't have an update to the manual, but I think that it's probably a good time to have that discussion when Jess is here. And let her know what you need so that she doesn't, so that she can update the manual fully with all of your feedback. So she can provide that information when she's here.
Right, we can ask her pertinent questions as she's here and then we can make notes for the update.
We need that to do the abatements, that information?
She'll be there.
She'll be here to walk you through the process.
And she'll have the gradients of waterfront?
Oh, yeah, she has all of that.
I'd love to see, if she can get that over in advance, that would also be helpful in as we look at this information. That's going to be pertinent to how we analyze the abatements. Is that possible, Christine?
I don't know if it's possible, all I can do is ask.
I'd hope that power doesn't go up for three days again.
Right.
Well, as ever, we will do the best we can with what we have and the questions that occurred to us at the time. So, and that's really all that can be done at this point, let's just do it. I have no comments or announcements.
So I guess I'm curious as to, from our policy for 24-hour notice, when today's meeting changed from abatement to warrant review, we didn't fall within that timeframe yet. There's been other meetings that were prohibited from happening due to a 24-hour timeframe, I guess I'd like clarification as to receiving notice yesterday at 11:30 that this, there was a meeting today. And when I tried to get the select board to participate, when Parker appraisal came to the town office, that we held firmly to that 24-hour timeline. Can you explain the difference in the meetings?
It was pretty clear that we were going to have weather for tomorrow night and that we wouldn't be meeting. I did send out an inquiry as soon as I got into the office about your availability. We gave it some time a year back for the board members to see who might be available. And we had to call the meeting in order to sign the warrant, which is really all that we wanted to accomplish. And that's as soon as we can get the agenda out.
So, but is it, is it notice to us or notice to the public? Because it's.
It's intended as notice to the public.
Because, because we didn't follow that stipulation and then, and I just want to make sure that we, you know, whatever the policy happens to be, that we stick with it. And, and I, it seems that we waver and.
Well, that's why this is a little bit unusual circumstances. Julie wanted to get the warrant done because the bills were piling up, we had to call a meeting to sign the warrant.
Well, I would consider, I would consider the meeting with Parker appraisal also an unusual circumstance that prohibited the board from participating. And I, and I guess, I don't see the difference in the meeting criteria. And, and as you know, I was definitely one who wanted to participate and felt that the timeline prohibited that, and yet it didn't prohibit this meeting from happening. And I just want to make sure that we follow a standard.
The, the difference between those two circumstances, as far as I can see, was that the, that they, it was not only because of the difficulty in the timing that at least I was concerned. It is also that, generally speaking, according to the FOA training, generally speaking, pretty much rule, is that information and that would not ordinarily be available to the public is not available to elected officials. And that to have us in the middle of that discussion would possibly prejudice us in our future considerations as we make quasi judicial decisions. And that we do not have and should not have access to any of the town service, which would have required, that request would have required. So it wasn't just on account of the meeting timing that I was opposed to having any or all of us at the review with, with Parker and Mr. Sullivan.
I can appreciate your position on that, Madeline, that happens not to be my position, and I think we just need to follow procedure. And that's where we seem to fall short frequently, and, and it shouldn't be lackadaisical, as I see it.
So what would you have suggested in this scenario with the weather coming?
You know, Christine, I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm just saying that we aren't following procedure. And, and when, when I requested, wholeheartedly wanted to participate in that meeting, the reason why the select board wasn't going to be present is because we didn't hit the 24-hour window. And I'm not, and now we have a meeting, and I, I'm all for moving the town forward on a daily business perspective and getting the warrant taken care of, but we can't pick and choose how we follow policy.
Well, then perhaps, understanding that 24-hour notice timing, you might have come back with a meeting time of 2:00 PM rather than 9:00 AM. It was up to the board, I didn't call the time, so.
Also, I don't want to get into this because I don't have time for this, but Suzanne, if we want to have discussion about who is following the policies at most times, we should put that on the agenda because in my, at this moment, not very humble opinion, you have most frequently violated policy, in particular in your willingness and insistence that you have a right to contact the town attorney whenever you feel like it, even though that is not void policy, but that is not on the agenda for today.
So Madeline, let's, let's expand upon that, because I'd like to see the document that stipulates that the select board doesn't have full authority, any one of us, to communicate with our town attorney. Because I don't believe it exists.
It does.
Well, terrific, let's see it.
If you will look at the select board's policies for procedure, you will find it. So, a public comment, please. Yes, Steve.
I'd like to ask the select board members a question. It's not meant to be provocative, just to see how things are going. For each of the select board members, how good a job do you think that Parker appraisal has done in the reassessment of Bath? Madeline?
I am not going to comment on that. I don't think that that is appropriate at this time.
My experience with Parker appraisal is that they've not followed their contract commitment. And I'm concerned with the elimination of language from our town attorney to protect the town. Was not included in the presentation of that contract to the select board prior to us signing it. And, and here we are in a concerning situation, having our residents and taxpayers put at risk on their confidence in this product that we've been presenting. And yet today, we still don't have a complete manual, but I was called out months ago that I was disseminating disinformation. And we still don't have the manual, so I, I was not sharing disinformation at that point. So I think it's, I, I think that we were put into a position a year in advance of necessary commitment. And that the state, because they require towns to have a re-balance every 10 years, that if we could not have found someone to participate in our request, bid request for that, the state is obligated to assist in the selection of an appropriate appraisal company to help the town move forward in that strategy.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve?
I'm concerned that some questions that I asked the February 15th Board of Select Board meeting have not been answered. I'd asked two questions pertaining to the appraisal. I followed up the day after with a more detailed email to the select board and the town administrator. I followed up a week later with the town administrator, who said they didn't have time to answer the questions. And that gets to the root, the two questions I asked gets to the root of the question of how good a job did Parker appraisal do? The two questions were, one, let me give a little background. One of the presentations of Parker is the West Bath Revaluation Manual, where it consists of a zillion pages of numbers, 95% of which is just redundant. The job of an assessor doing a re-balance. The job of an assessor doing a revaluation, first, the hardest part of the job, is to look at sales, derive parameters to put into the computer program. And this is very important because as we know, garbage in, garbage out. So the first question I asked was, what is the basis for probably the most important parameter in that manual, which was what is the base value of a titled shorefront lot in Westbath? The number in the manual is five hundred thousand dollars. The question is, what basis does the assessor have for that number? He should have done an analysis of sales and said, it's five hundred thousand dollars because here's the bracket of sales, blah, blah, blah. That has not been done, it has not been presented. So my question was justified five hundred thousand dollars? Was it just pulled out of the air? Was it pulled out of South Bristol? Where does this number come from? Because that was his job to establish that number. The second question was, what is the accuracy of the assessment? That has not been provided, it is normally provided by anyone doing a revaluation. In particular, it doesn't matter a whole lot, but it's the coefficient of dispersion. But let me say on the side that I did the calculation with what was presented. And the result was twenty-six. In plain speak, what that means is that, on average, by the statistics, half of the assessments done in Westbath are off by at least twenty-six percent. Twenty-six percent above or below, or a hundred percent above. It's at least twenty-six percent off for half of the assessments in Westbath. That is very large by any normal standard. But I asked the question so that Parker appraisal would at last offer that parameter so we would have a judgment as to how accurate the assessment was. I understand the Board of Assessors, you guys are not going to be able to answer that question, but Parker appraisal, if they had done their job, should have been able to answer that immediately. So again, I request that you ask Parker appraisal those two questions and they will reflect on how good a job Parker appraisal did and the town would really like to know. My expectation is that Parker appraisal does not have any basis for the five hundred thousand dollar number, but I would love to see that they do and I would like to look at what they say. My second guess is that they probably have not done the calculation of the error. One, because it involves a little effort and two, because it might reflect poorly on the revaluation process. So again, I ask the select board to pursue that with the assessors. Thank you.
Over to you, Matt. And for your comment. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Sure.
No, that was Jess?
Yep.
Second on paper.
Thank you all, on to the rest.
Stay warm, everyone.